We're gonna propose that we, uh, stand for the flags and after the flags. A moment of silence?
Oh, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Uh, all board members are here except for Becky Austin. Principals are in attendance. Superintendent Winter and Erin Nasco.
A motion for adoption of the agenda, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item five, communications recognition, open forum report.
There were a number of, uh, parents here, some general questions on fees, uh, referendum costs. Thank you. Uh, fees, referendum costs, um, how parents hear from the school on issues, that kind of thing, and so we will be addressing. Most of the questions I think were answered here tonight, so.
Alright, moving forward, thank you. Board committees. Open forum committee.
We did meet and, yup, we met and addressed the issues and the information was sent out.
How many letters?
Two.
Item B, that that committee?
Their personal.
PTA?
I guess absent.
Alright. And D, bus contractors.
Met last week with the bus contractors, um, we're two years into their contract, before your contract, they had some concerns, questions, things that they brought up, and so they gave us some information we gotta look into.
Mark, you should maybe take the mic so that.
Moving on to item E, Stearns County Collaborative.
Uh, we had our beginning of the year meeting, approved finance reports, um, budgets, I guess the biggest, it was a very short meeting, the biggest takeaway I got is, um, a lot of people are having a hard time finding resources to fulfill some of their mental health positions, so they're trying to get creative, do other things, get some hard time people in, but, um, otherwise it was, it was only fifteen minutes, about all we talked about, so there are some extra projects going on, and sometime there's an art therapy program, Grandia Minnesota Family Center is doing that, it's getting ready, do you know more about that?
No, no, that was the first time I ever.
Okay, so I might look into that to see what that is, what it means, so, um, that's all.
Uh, district technology.
Steve Schlesberg said the microphones are still coming, they got delayed because of the storms and everything, so they should be coming shortly, um, being given out to the teachers who requested them. He also said March, he went to a workshop in Bram and they discussed security, um, action plans for incidences, that kind of thing, and on March thirtieth, they will have a security check here in our school for the whole day, checking on internal gauges, where we, where we are, what we need to do, um, action plans for incidents, those kinds of things. That was kind of about all we talked about was, was their checking into that, and it's gonna be a pretty thorough investigation, the way it looks, checking to see if we have any, any areas we need to beef up more. Anything else?
Thank you. Moving on to administrative reports, Mr. Duckett?
Yes, Chair, board members, I mentioned to you, I mentioned to you earlier about, uh, that I was looking into a diversion program. I found one, uh, it's called My Life, My Quit, uh, it was a recommendation, uh, given to me from, uh, Stearns County Health. I'm gonna be out there, so I did some digging on it, communicated with, uh, with our SRO, uh, and with our chief in town here, and believe we're gonna try to utilize this and see how, how it goes. Um, obviously, uh, any students that want to do this, as diversion instead of paying fines and so on, will be able to do this, um, we'll see, see what goes, it's up to the student and the parent, otherwise they can choose to pay whatever fine that the city were paying, so, but we think that it'll be a positive thing and more of an educational program, so. Also, I gave you information regarding snow days week, uh, on there regarding the dates and so on, what's happening this week. Congrats to Duke, Braden Schlepper, and Duchess Rup Meyer today, who were around, and, uh, I also put some academics data on there for you for first semester, and, uh, finally, just, you know, we, we, me, I think we all really appreciate your efforts for being board members, and you don't hear that enough from, from, uh, the general community, so just wanted to mention that to you, I really appreciate everything that you guys do. Thank you.
A quick question?
Yes.
Uh, I looked on the app today and I couldn't find anything on the royalty at that, maybe there'd be a picture, like even last week of who was running, does that not go out anywhere, or?
Um, I will double check on that.
Or I was getting the.
Usually it does, uh, usually there's information on TVs or something of that nature, or usually on website, there will be something, but I'll, uh, I'll double check that.
Okay.
Just get more of it this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, good evening, it's that time of year again where, um, testing has really ramped up, we're currently doing access with our ELs, um, six twelve is going this week, K five has started and they, they go for about a month and a half, and that's already been taking place. Um, as it says there, our NAAT test has been rescheduled because of the weather, and district ACT is next Tuesday, and there are about seventy-four juniors taking that, um, they're working on their pre-ACT tough stuff right now, and we have the Minnesota Student Survey for those grades listed is happening next week, and then last, not last, but MCA testing, that schedule is being created, is being, the schedule's been created, but, um, we're refining it a little bit, making it condensed, and that will start the first week of April and end the second week of May, and then just a reminder, conferences are next Thursday and Friday, so, busy month, couple months. Any questions about that stuff? Alright.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes, good evening, um, in the report you see that kindergarten roundup is just around the corner, so we know spring is coming, and we are having it April first, we're looking forward to having our new incoming kindergarteners come to visit that day. Um, I gave you some data too, to see some, um, nice numbers of exits from students, um, reading target, reaching their targets in interventions for the district, and so that was nice to see those twenty-nine exits this winter when we went through our winter benchmark data. We, I think I shared with you before that we had applied for, um, two Minnesota Reading Corps tutors, and we did get awarded that. Um, we are hopeful that the current tutor will stay with us another year, she really enjoys being at Melrose, so then we will be looking for one more, tutor also, so we're hopeful that we can fill those two positions. And, um, the elementary is just finishing up their one school, one book, and they will have their culminating activity, supported in K four by PTA, so we thank you. Kemper Zoo is coming to put on, um, bringing animals to school and putting on a program, three different little programs in the auditorium on March third, and you guys are welcome, and you got those times, so we're, we're really excited to, the kids are looking forward to that. And then, um, I too just wanna say thank you for all your support, um, for the last couple years and definitely this year with all the decisions you've had to make, and, um, the kids were excited to be able to make posters and things and hang across, throughout the district to show their appreciation and to say thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reiter?
First of all, I wanna compliment Coach Glazner, it was a fantastic section wrestling match last week. It really put a spotlight on our school, our sense of organization, uh, what our custodians could do, what our support staff could do, um, even more so what our technology can do, I know Mr. Anderson played a, a huge role in that with our, um, technology that we could do, so those parents at that section meet, if you've ever been to a wrestling section meet, very chaotic, lot of things going on, lot of mats going on, lot of different things going on, so it was great to have that technology present so that those parents could see it, and along with Mr. Anderson, our custodial staff, Teresa Shad, Audrey Heltner, all, uh, played a huge role in making that event a great success. We talked a little bit in the open forum, uh, a little bit about school funding, the legislation is in full swing right now, as I've talked about it many times before, the state does a two-year biennium, first year they do all the funding, second year they do the bonding and the policy. Well, this is the second year of the biennium, and this session is probably gonna last longer than last year's session because of the budget surplus. We were told a couple of months ago, the budget surplus was projected at seven point seven million, with the revenues they've taken in already this year, they're projecting the budget to be nine point two-five billion. Um, our schools, our superintendents, our groups like C, who do the lobby efforts at the school, we're certainly gonna be working with them to make sure that we do get additional funding to cover some of the cross subsidy and special ed, uh, help us with our loss of compensatory funding that we, uh, lost this last year due to everybody getting free lunches, uh, more money for our CTE spending, career tech ed, which is our industrial tech classes, so we're working with our groups, with our associations, also with our lobby groups of the C, to make sure that at least if we can be heard and be at the table when the state, the legislature, the governor makes the final decision on that. So there's a lot of other things going on with the legislative session that have nothing to do with schools, I'm certainly not here to be an advocate of that, but I know there are many other things going on with that. Uh, last thing, and I do have one more thing to cover, um, all the principals have mentioned it, it's the school board recognition week last week and this week. Been talking to many school board members within the last couple of years, you didn't sign up for this. And I appreciate the flexibility, the creativity, the support that the sport has given to this district, and has been part of, I think, our greatest success throughout the pandemic, so thank you very much for that. For those that came in late, that moment of silence was for Erin Smith, who passed away last night, our food service director. I know he will leave a tremendous void in his family. He'll also leave a tremendous void for our district as well, so lots and prayers go out for the family on that.
A comment on that, he's an overall good guy, very good. That's all I'll say.
Yup. Got a little.
Building, community, fire department, lot.
I don't know who he's going to friendly to.
I agree, always in a good mood. Sorry, Chris, you just.
Always in a good mood.
Huge loss.
Moving on to item, uh, non-action items. First would be an update on the facility planning.
Just wanna throw a, a couple of quick statements out there and certainly allow the board to, uh, throw a few comments. It was discussed in the open forum meeting once again, that, uh, the board has been busy working on a series of work, be, working meetings to identify strategic planning, long-term strategic planning for the district, taking a look at our facilities, uh, taking a look at information from the survey, taking a look at some of the more up-to-date information on funding, kinda getting to that equity, which we talked about in the open forum, so it's not so expensive for us to run a levy referendum versus e-dine up. Um, so we have been working again with the architect. You just see, even the last session, the architect brought a cool consultant in to give this board some really in-depth information on pools, structures of pools, type of pools, develop those type of things. We are in the process of planning a, a meeting with the city council, who wants to sit down and talk with us about joint ventures in terms of community usage of facilities that are being built, and also at the same time, possible city, um, subsidizing some of this, so none of that has been determined yet, we haven't met with the city yet. We've reached out to the, we have reached out to the city to set up that meeting to talk about our possible partnership with our, um, next possible bond referendum. Our last meeting will be on March twenty-first, and, um, hopefully at that time, the board will have enough decisions to be able to either move forward on that or make some alternate decisions on long-term strategic planning. Um, it's your input from the board?
Then we will decide at the March meeting.
Well, we'll decide whether to move forward, and then we have to make that official decision, yes, at the.
March meeting.
I was thinking March, like, first weekend, the March school board meeting, March school board.
And the meeting with the city council is?
March sixteenth.
That'll be the building grounds.
Building grounds, maybe with city council, so.
Is there a specific city council?
Uh, one was created for this.
Alright, so move forward to item B, would be a policy four thirteen harassment and violence, second review.
Second review, no changes from the first review.
Questions or comments that have come up in the last month? Moving on to C, would be policy five oh seven corporal punishment, second review.
No changes since the first review.
Anybody chime in if they got questions? Item, or policies, or item D, policy seven twenty-one, uniform grant guidance policy regarding federal revenue sources.
No changes since first review.
And the last policy, nine oh five advertising, second review.
Once again, no changes since first review.
So all four policies will be?
On the agenda.
On the agenda for next month, to be voted up or down? Moving on to item nine, uh, if I could get a motion for the consent agenda, so. And a second? Anybody need to take things separately or excuse themselves from any part of this? Highlights?
Starting the hire for spring sports, um, and you'll see a lot of hiring for those spring sports are offset by the, obviously, the resignations of those spring sports. A lot of those are due to maternity day leave, of which we talked about before, we have a ratio of staff that are off maternity leave, and I was just notified of another one today. So it's just a lot of hiring for that, and, um, I know we're, I've already been meeting with the principals, how to, already we're marketing some different ways to fill some of those teaching positions that we've lost, who are ready to, a couple of teachers that have resigned. Just as we fill those positions, only a few teachers that resigned in December.
Any questions or comments for Greg? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that consent agenda as listed, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item ten, treasurer's report. Motion for, a motion for approval of the treasurer's report, please?
So moved.
And a second?
There's not a whole lot to note, um, everything's going well, we're right where we should be, um, for the month of February compared to last year. Everything looks good. Not a whole lot else going on.
No surprises.
No surprises today.
Any questions for Erin? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the treasurer's report, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item eleven, action items. First would be donations and gifts. Motion for, a motion for approval, acceptance of gifts and donations as listed?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Once again, with some, uh, great donations from Central Minnesota Credit Union, a couple of our sportsmen's club for our archery program, and I popped in there a couple of times this year on archery night. Unbelievable what our students are, uh, being, uh, able to do that night, it's, it's, um, it's a mixture of both male and female students, it's not a male activity, there's a lot of females there that are learning a lot of skills, and, uh, it's just a great sport to be able to compete in that. And Melrose line for some girls swimming warmups. Um, we did get a donation from Central Minnesota Credit Union for t-shirts at the top, but we also received a miscellaneous donation of a bunch of pencils and notepads and all kinds of items. The reason why Central Minnesota Credit Union donated to us, they're rebranding their logo and name, and they just thought we'd be a good place to give two thousand number two lead pencils to that still say Central Minnesota Credit Union on it. Don't care what they say on there. So, very, uh, very appreciative of that donation as well, and those resources will be put to very good use.
Great, can I ask, who's the sock river gobbler?
Sportsman club of some type, I'm not sure, I, I just always remember seeing it on here, sock river gobblers, that, uh, it's a, I can look into it and find out where they're actually at, but.
Along the sock river.
I assumed on the sock river somewhere.
Yes, there is turkey on there.
Yeah, there's turkey on there. I, I don't think I've seen it. Yup. I think we've kinda had it on there a couple of times, since I always remember seeing it. Green robe rod and lug, though, yeah, that I.
Yeah, that's a memorable bear, yes.
It's low priority, but I'll find out where. They wanna be known, I don't know who the gobblers are.
Any other questions or research? Hearing none?
Pat?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Becky, yes. Motion approved.
Alright, item B would be, um, a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school calendar. So moved. And a second?
Second.
This calendar's been out on the websites, I've worked out with the admit team, this calendar represents our, uh, early start again next year because of the early, uh, labor, or excuse me, later Labor Day start. It's been out on the website, I have received, uh, quite a bit of feedback from the websites and also with the teachers' labor management committee, also with the staff development committee. There are a few changes on here from past years, one of the big changes, we're gonna try to start in school before Labor Day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, instead of Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the four Hs reached out to me and said there was a lot of students that are, that's a first heavy weekend at the fair with four H, instead of running home and trying to get to school the next day. We went to school until Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then have the two days off and be, uh, starting again after Labor Day. Next year, it's gonna be a little awkward for Christmas break because of the fact that we have to also take Mon, Monday off, second, because it's a holiday. And you know, I also noticed I put some colors on there to delineate some of the workshop days, non-school days, those type of things, so a little bit of color to help people look at the calendar and, you know, help them understand.
So you're saying we're accommodating the four H?
Yup, and I ran it by the LMCs and the staff development, they said they were fine, but just to try it one year, doesn't work out. Uh, this is the, the third and final year that we can start early, because Labor Day starts shifting to an earlier start, so this is probably gonna be the last time we're being able to do it.
We can petition again.
Yeah, but without a, without a building project and early Labor Day, they probably won't let us do it. We can try. So far, in the two years we've had it, it's, it's, I've received no complaints, it's worked well, and because of the wrong calendar year, if we didn't do it these last three years, we wouldn't be completing school till the second week of June, this week we're done.
Comments, questions, suggestions? And you've had this on the web, huh?
Yup. It's been on the website, as I've changed it, I've changed it on the website and certainly in the weekly messages that sent that information out. I think that's where I got some of the phone calls from.
Hearing no other questions, all in favor of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item C would be the mascot of the Melrose Sock Center wrestling team, a motion to approve the new mascot?
So moved.
And a second?
Our co-op with, uh, Sock Center for our wrestling program has never had a mascot. They chose this mascot as the defenders, it's the color of the shield, and with the defenders, and of course, because it's a Minnesota State High School League sanctioned activity, um, if they're gonna create a mascot, the school board does have to approve it. Our board is approving this tonight, Sock Center board will also be approving it also to be final and be their official mascot between our co-op schools within the wrestling program, Sock Center and Melrose.
Are there any objections or anything?
Absolutely.
Of student, the kids, current wrestling.
Yes. Let's speak to that, Mr. Anderson, there was a lot of meetings and.
Yeah, they, they chose, they started by picking random names and they narrowed it down to three, and they had inputs and drawings put together, and so they gave up on this, defenders is what they chose.
And I'm assuming gold for Melrose and for Versailles.
I think we've been co-op for ten odd years now, and now probably more than that, that without any type of mascot, we just use SCM. All right, so trying to give parents something to cheer for the stats rather than the SCM.
To give them a little bit of identity.
Yeah, absolutely.
Stuff for two schools that are co-op.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the mascot as listed?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item D. Motion for approval of. Motion for approval of the achievement and integration budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Just the annual approve, annual approver of Wendy Barrett's budget for the academic integration. One thing, two notes. You see the Sigrid group page in your folder. I sat down and met with her. Unfortunately, her revenue is up ten thousand dollars this year, which will help with some of her programming along with being able to pay for some of our paras out of her budget as well. And I also sat down and talked with her. It's been a while since she's ran a summer school program and we're looking at getting that possibly going end of July. We've got a few roadblocks with that, most notably finding teachers. I'm speculating by the end of the year, teachers are going to be burned out if they're not already way past burned out now. So we'll see what we can do. And it's part of the whole MPSS, part of the whole campus program to allow students an opportunity to recover lost education. And as we talked about many times, we've, we've been pretty fortunate during the course of the pandemic, at least to keep our elementary in school intact the whole time. And so we'll continue to move forward and that, see if there are some summer school opportunities that we can input in place with some of the parameters of the funding to help some of those students, so.
So is it summer school for elementary?
It'll be summer school for elementary, possible some middle school students. We need to take a look and identify some parameters because you really, it just, we just can't open it up to everyone. You have to define parameters of who it would be for and.
Specifically by recommendation of a teacher?
Yep. We've got to find teachers.
No, I.
And it's going to be difficult.
And we have been doing it.
Up before, tell before the pandemic.
So if high schoolers need to recover credits, they would use ALC?
They could possibly use ALC, but now we are also venturing on our own into.
What's the program?
Edgenuity.
Edgenuity.
We're doing it outside of the staff.
Great.
Is that mostly online or?
Yep.
Is there anything else you can tell us? Is it, is it going now or is it in the works? Okay.
It's, we switched to Edgenuity last summer.
Okay.
We, we are using Edgenuity, which is what the American Center is using. Social. That was Acelis at one time and Edgenuity was something that was looked at and people there felt like it's probably a better program. And Acelis, the cost of Acelis.
We're just running it in-house with our interventionists who could better work with those students that we post.
So it's then during the school day?
No. After school.
After, after school.
By teacher recommendation again or?
No, that, that is for credit recovery.
For students that are behind on credits for graduation.
That program is specifically for credit recovery.
We look at the academic data and that's, build the list. How did their, how did, not that budget, but the integration. That's not a budget, but it went up ten thousand dollars.
That's the money that comes through the state that Wendy worked with that program to help integrate and work with students, create some academic support, summer school, different types of programs, and also to fund a lot of teachers, perhaps keep some class sizes down and also fund some pairs that work within the building as well. If you recall, Deb DuKloos, she's been here for many years, her salary is totally paid out of that to work with elementary students that are falling behind and get them back up to speed again when they do fall behind.
It went, I guess my question is, did it went up because of a state funding issue or because of our, our number?
Nope. There was just more money allocated from the state that gave us an additional ten thousand dollars. There wasn't any change in our demographics or anything like that. And if you recall, for many years, her budget actually went down for a number of years. This is the first time in a long time it's gone up.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the achievement and integration budget fiscal year twenty-three? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item twelve. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.